Go fuck yourself, you ugly ass bitch. So. Alright, so what do we have? To be honest, that's what we have. So we have you telling people on ten twenty seven. I berated and embarrassed a customer. What did he yell and say at the to the customer? So you're lying to have sex with him. He spent. You you're trying to lie to get him to be afraid? And to have sex with you? To get him to be afraid that he can't oh if he doesn't have sex with you, you'll keep lying on him? And giving him care destroying his destroying his uh is his work history? So you'll tell people he doesn't get along with customers? But that's not true. This dude treats every customer with lots of respect. You just lied. This customer, he said, uh, no, this customer was rude. He's very rude. So you painted the customer as a good person? And you painted him as a bad person? He said, sir, can you please pull your pants up? The customer told him, if you don't like what I see, what you see, look elsewhere. That is a very disrespectful customer. Telling somebody to look elsewhere instead of pulling their pants out? Hello?
Hi, this is the unemployment judge calling for John Lattimore.
Hi, this is John Lattimore. It's eight thirty three AM.
Yeah, Mr. Lattimore, are you uh ready for your unemployment hearing this morning?
Uh, yes.
Okay, great. Are you representing yourself for the hearing?
Yes, I am.
Anyone else who you expected would appear with you for the hearing?
Uh, no, I didn't expect anybody else.
Did you receive papers from the unemployment hearing office marked U one through U fifty six?
Uh, yes, yes, yes.
Do you have those papers with you this morning?
Yes, I do.
Okay, great. Did you also send uh papers to the uh hearing office? Let's see if how they are marked. Uh, looks like one pack is one through three, and then it looks like you sent another one another single page. So it would be uh four pages of material that you sent to the hearing office. Does that sound right?
Uh, it sounds accurate.
Okay. And did you send a copy of the those papers that you sent to the hearing office? Did you send a copy of those to uh Muse LLC?
Yes, I did.
Okay, very well. What is your address, Mr. Lattimore?
Uh, thirteen twenty one Timken Avenue, apartment eight, Madison, Wisconsin, five three seven oh five.
Very well, thank you for that information. Uh, I'll now call uh Muse LLC, so just give me a minute to do that.
Okay.
Welcome to the UPS Store Middleton, a locally owned business. For questions regarding UPS package deliveries, pickups or tracking, press one. Regarding Amazon packages, press two. For our store location, hours, and latest pickup time, press three. For fax and notary, press four. For the graphic designer, press five. Press nine to speak with an associate, or press pound to repeat this menu. Please hold as we transfer your call. The holidays may have ended, but we know your list of things to do in twenty twenty four keeps growing. Well, fortunately, you can rely on the certified packing experts here at the UPS Store to pack.
Thank you for calling the UPS Store Middleton. My name is Emily. How can I help?
Yes, hi, I'm an unemployment judge calling. I'm starting a hearing involving UPS uh store and uh John Lattimore the third. Can you connect me with whomever would be representing you uh UPS in the hearing?
All right, well, I'll place you on a brief hold here.
Oh, sure. Thanks.
Hello, sir. Thank you for holding. Um, I'm going to transfer you over to the owner of our store. Um, in case I get disconnected or the transfer doesn't work, would you like his cell phone number?
Yeah, that would be great. What what's his name first?
His name is Jack McWilliams.
Okay.
Um, and phone number? Phone number for him is six oh eight eight five two four nine five nine.
Okay, very well, thank you.
Okay, um, and then I'll go ahead and put in transfer you now.
Okay, that'd be great. Thank you.
The holidays may have ended, but we know your list of things to do in twenty twenty four keeps growing. Well, fortunately, you can rely on the certified.
This is Jack.
Yes, Mr. McWilliams, this is the unemployment judge calling. I'm starting the unemployment hearing uh involving the UPS Store uh Middleton and John Lattimore. Are you representing the UPS Store this morning?
Um, yeah, I spoke with my attorney in regards to this, and um they said that I didn't have to participate in this, and I could um kind of opt out of this. Is that not the case?
That that is the case. So you don't have to participate. If you don't want to, uh, if you don't participate, I'll just go ahead and do the hearing with Mr. Lattimore. Do you want me to do it that way?
Okay. Yeah, I've been instructed to avoid this. He's been filming every conversation we have and putting all my information up on YouTube. It's getting really close to a lawsuit, so I think at this point, the more I separate myself from this, the the better, because it's just getting a lot of control with him, so.
Okay, very well.
Uh.
I'll put you down as uh not appearing. I'll put you down as not appearing for today's hearing, and uh thanks for talking to me.
Don't don't threaten me with a lawsuit, sir.
Mr. Lattimore, Mr. Lattimore, please be quiet.
Okay.
Uh, Mr. McWilliams, uh, thanks for talking to me, and uh, like I said, I'll put uh UPS Store down as uh not appearing. And uh we'll go forward with the hearing without uh UPS Store, okay?
Alright, thank you, sir.
Thanks for talking to me. Okay, Mr. uh Mr. Lattimore, we're gonna do the hearing uh without the employer.
Okay.
And uh I'll make a decision based on what you uh present today. And uh there are two different hearings in front of me uh today, two different appeals in front of me, Mr. Lattimore. The uh the uh first one has to do with uh suspension, and the second one has to do with the uh the separation from uh UPS. Uh, so I'm gonna handle them together on the same hearing recording, because I think they they started from the same uh event. And um that'll save us some time. I won't have to repeat uh some things. And uh I won't have to repeat questions, and I won't have to take the same piece of paper and evidence twice and that sort of thing.
Alright.
Uh, so uh we'll do them together. So if you will bear with me for a few minutes, I'll introduce the first hearing uh uh number into today's record. Uh, so I'm gonna give a speech for a few minutes, Mr. Lattimore. Uh, this is hearing number two three zero zero nine five six two M D. It involves John Lattimore the third, who is the appellant. Muse LLC, also known as UPS Store of Middleton is the respondent. This matter started with a determination issued by an unemployment department deputy on December tw- two two thousand twenty three. It held that in issue week forty six of two thousand twenty three, which is the weekend in November eighteen of two thousand twenty three, that the employee's suspension was for good cause. The effect was no benefits um are payable for November twelve through November eighteen, which is week forty six on the unemployment department calendar. Mr. Mr. Lattimore filed a timely appeal of that determination. And that leads us to today's hearing.
Okay.
Now, when so that's the first one, and now I'll introduce the the second hearing number. Uh, this is hearing number two three zero zero nine five six three M D. It also involves John Lattimore the third, who is the appellant. Muse LLC is the respondent. This matter started with a determination issued by an unemployment department deputy on December second two thousand twenty three. It held that in issue week forty six of two thousand twenty three, which is the weekend in November eighteen of two thousand twenty three, that the employee was discharged for misconduct connected with his employment. The effect was no benefits were payable. Again, Mr. McLattimore filed a timely appeal of that determination. And that leads us to today's hearing. Today is January four, two thousand twenty four. It's now eight forty four AM. This uh hearing is being conducted by telephone. It is being recorded. I am the administrative law judge handling today's hearing. My first name is Eric, E R I C. Last name Volkman, V as in Victor, O L K, M A N N. John Lattimore the third appears by telephone representing himself. He did not expect anyone else to appear with him for this morning's hearing. I spoke to Jack McWilliams, owner of Muse LLC, and uh Mr. McWilliams said that the employer is not going to participate. So we'll go forward uh without the employer uh on both of these uh hearing numbers. Procedures for both hearing numbers are uh the same. Everything is being recorded. Let's try to have only one person speaking at a time until the recording is clear. If at any point during today's hearing you can't hear uh what I am saying, please speak up immediately. I'll try to correct whatever the problem is and repeat what you missed. In a few minutes, I will swear you in. All of your testimony will be under oath. Once I've sworn you in, I'll ask you several questions regarding the issues in each of these two hearing numbers. When I'm finished questioning you, I'll give you the chance to fill in whatever we have not covered through my questioning.
Okay.
Any piece of paper that any piece of paper that we discussed during today's hearing, I'll mark as an exhibit. And I'll let you know that I'm marking it at the end of the hearing outside one of those marked papers. Those marked exhibits will be admitted into evidence. Any of the marked exhibits that are admitted into evidence I can use to help me make my decision in uh both of these hearing numbers. Mr. Lattimore, do you have any questions regarding today's procedures?
No.
Okay, very well. Now, with respect to the issues, I'm going to decide after today's hearing. They're different issues uh in each of the hearing numbers. In the hearing number ending nine five six two, the issue I'm going to decide is whether your suspension was for good cause connected with your work. And uh so that's the issue I'll decide in that uh first hearing number.
Alright.
Do you have any do you have any questions regarding the issue of the issue in that first hearing number?
Um, uh I yeah, um, the suspension, yes, I have, I think, I don't know. Is this uh is this the time I'm supposed to ask? Uh, like, uh, I'm so sorry. I've never done this before. I'm a I fear if I say no, that you'll move straight to the decision. Uh.
No, 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 no. You're you're gonna get a chance to testify under oath regarding both uh
Okay.
hearing numbers uh this morning. So I'm just asking you if you understand the issue in the in the first.
Yes, I understand both. Uh, yes.
Okay, very, yeah, very well. Okay, good. Yeah, I'm gonna let you tell your side of what happened here. That's why we're here.
Okay.
Now, in the uh in the second one, nine five six three, I'm going to ask you a question or two to help me outline uh the issues for that hearing. Is it your contention that you quit the UPS Store of Middleton, or were you discharged?
I was discharged.
Okay. Were you given a reason for the discharge?
Yes.
What did just briefly, what did they tell you was the reason for the discharge?
I wore company clothes, and that means I represented the company at that at the time the incident occurred. And he, yes.
Okay, and I'll let you describe that incident when you're under oath here in just a minute.
Okay.
Okay. Now, with respect to this uh this uh second hearing number, the uh when when someone is discharged from employment, he starts out eligible for unemployment benefits. Uh, that only changes if it is shown that the discharge was for either misconduct or substantial fault connected with the employment. Uh, so with respect to this uh second hearing number, what I'll decide after today's hearing is whether your discharge by the UPS Store uh was for misconduct or substantial fault connected with the employment, okay?
Okay.
So that's uh issue. Do you have any uh questions regarding the issue in that hearing number?
No, I do not.
Okay, very well. If you if questions come up during the hearing, just stop me. I'll give you a chance to ask, okay?
Okay.
Mr. Lattimore, are you ready to testify?
Yes.
Please raise your right hand. Let me know when it's raised. I'll swear you.
I it is raised.
Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give in this matter is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Thank you. You can lower your right hand. Please state your full name for me.
Uh, John M Marian Lattimore the third.
Please uh spell your last name for me.
Um, L A T T I M O R E.
Thank you. And Mr. Lattimore, what are the last four digits of your social security number?
Nine seven zero seven.
Uh, did you once work for the UPS Store of Middleton?
Yes.
And what was the date uh you started working uh for the UPS Store of Middleton?
I I believe it was in um Octo- October first, I believe, the beginning of October. I apologize, I don't have the exact date.
Okay, let me uh I'm just looking through the files here to see if it's written down anywhere.
Uh, I'm I'm so sorry. It was, it says, um, nine eleven twenty twenty three?
Yeah, I'm looking at uh I'm looking at a summary of your uh statement to a department, an unemployment department investigator that said not September eleven. Do you think that's right?
Yes.
Okay, thanks for correcting that. And what was the last day you performed work for UPS Store of Middleton?
Eleven twelve twenty twenty three.
What was your last job title there?
Uh, store cashier or customer service rep, um, store cashier.
On average, how many hours per week did you work for uh UPS?
Forty hours.
Did you have a regular shift that you worked?
Uh, a reg- regularly eight hours or more, uh, but it varied. Um, uh, the days weren't always the same each week.
Okay. Did you usually work days or nights or both?
Uh, uh, mid so from eleven, I'm sorry, so day and night, so from eleven to seven PM, uh, usually, or six PM. Um, day days and nights.
And what 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 was your last rate of uh pay at UPS?
I was paid sixteen dollars and fifty cents.
And so were you uh were you suspended at some point by uh UPS?
Yes, I was.
And uh what was the date uh of the suspension?
Um, eleven twelve twenty twenty three.
And how were you uh advised that you were being suspended? Were you told in person or told over the phone or what?
Uh, in person, in the back uh back office area, uh back office of the store.
So who was at that meeting other than yourself?
Uh, individual named uh the individual who hired me named Dylan. He was a, I believe, a manager.
Anyone else at that uh meeting other than yourself and Dylan?
Uh, a few, his his wife uh was uh working in the back office while he uh he um he terminated uh while he was giving me, not terminated, but while he was talking to me, his wife was there. And I will, I think it's important to add, there was a audio camera. Um, there's audio. There's an audio recording device all over the store.
Okay. And so were you told why you were being suspended?
Y- yes.
And what were you told?
I was told that um you were wearing company clothes at the time this occurred, and that means you represent the company. Um, and you have to, essentially, he said, he didn't, I I can't recall exactly if he said this or not, but he was implying I had to follow company policies if I wore his clothes, if I had company clothes on. And if the company logo was covered up. So whether or not the person could see the logo of the company, it didn't matter. He plainly stated or asked, he asked me if I was wearing company clothes, I said yes. Uh, and that's all he cared about. He didn't care about anything else.
Did he tell you how long the suspension was gonna last?
He said, I will call you um uh shortly after, uh, when I figure out, when I figured things out. Because I I don't know, you told me a one, something that contradicts what the cus- what the individual from the parking lot told me. So I have to figure out who's telling the truth or the facts, and I will let you know shortly after. That's what he told me. He said, you have to go home. Um, and uh that was, that was it. He didn't give me a timeline. He just said, you have to go home until I He just said, you have to go home until I figure this out.
Okay. And so when's, when is your next contact from uh UPS after, after you go home?
Um, I believe I sent, uh, the, uh, Dylan a message. And I reiterated that this uh person has, I've had an interaction with the individual in the, in the parking lot. Prior, um, eh, eh, it was non-verbal. It was uh, I was just telling him that I seen the guy's buttocks. Uh, before, in the same situation, and um, Dylan then, uh, he told me to. He uh, he didn't respond, um, but I am, I, I, I didn't say this while I was speaking to him inside his office. And I thought it was relevant to inform him that I have, this man has displayed nudity to me before. That was the only contact I had with him right after, um, it wasn't in, two days later is when I. Officially was told that I was no longer working for the company.
Okay, and who, uh, so was that a phone call when they told you you were being discharged?
Yes.
And who made that call?
Uh, the own, the owner of the store.
Mister McWilliams?
Yes.
Was anybody else on that call other than yourself and Mister McWilliams?
Uh, no, I, oh, um, no, there wasn't. I did record the conversation I had with Mister McWilliams, and I did post that on the internet.
Did you say anything to Mister McWilliams when he uh told you you were being discharged?
Yes, I, I did, I, I explained that this man, I know the individual in the parking lot. That uh was there, um, who showed me his butt, was doing it purposefully. I, I tried my best to explain that to Mister McWilliams, uh, but he ad- he refused to listen. Well, he didn't want to acknowledge that this is a behavior that adults, m- male adults do. To insult or harass other adults. And, um, he, he ignored what I said to him, so I, 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 I know it's ultimately his choice. To believe what he wants, but I chose, I chose to, um, I chose to tell him because I thought it was important for hindsight. Um, to, eh, to, to, to state the, to, for the obvious to be heard. Well, I'm sorry, I told him what I believed, Mister McWilliams said he was gonna stick to the, the pre-scripted. Um, statements he had uh written, and that he had no plans to debate his decision. And uh, and I, 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 I think it was, like, I think he had this all planned out. Like, he, he was gonna say this and this and this, um, uh, that's what the conversation felt like to me. Um, that there was no, yeah.
Okay, so uh, tell me Mister Lattimore then, what happened on November twelfth?
Um, so, I got to work.
What hap- well, I, I guess let me, let me uh be more specific, what happened on November twelfth that led to your, your suspension and then your discharge?
Alright, so I, I arrived to work like I normally do, um, I drove slowly, uh, through the parking lot. Uh, and as I turned the first corner, took a right, I seen a man's, I seen a man standing. And I seen this man before, in the exact same position, wearing nearly the same clothes. Um, uh, from the, the other end of the parking lot, and I knew he was about to, um, bend over. And I knew it, uh, I slowly went down the driveway and I, and as I did. The man started bending over, and you could clearly see that his butt was rising out of his pants. And he was doing it as slowly, um, as you, it was like slow motion. As I drove slowly, he was doing it slowly, and it was a disturbing sight, and it was upsetting. It is very upsetting to arrive to work in the morning, when your mind's completely on other things. To see something like that, and uh, especially for the second time, this is the second time this man has did this. Um, so, I tried to slow down, and it's, it's kind, I, I know it sounds crazy. But it's almost as if the man stopped bending over as my car slowed down. Um, uh, so I just drove, I just drove, cause I knew he was, he was being manipulative. Um, so I drove down the alley, when I got to the guy. Um, I said the words GF yourself, I, I, I told.
Meeting, go fuck, go fuck yourself?
Yes. Um, I, I told him, uh, uh, he, well, no, that's not true. I'm so sorry, I, I didn't say that directly to him, I just said it out the window, which, which is what I normally do. Um, I normally, instead of directing my ver- my words at somebody. To avoid an altercation, I usually say it uh publicly. But it's, it's, it's what I've learned from other people, um, don't direct, don't, if you. Speak out loud, it's like you're, you're avoiding confrontation, so.
Okay, now, now this man that, that, that you see.
Yes.
When he bent over, was he picking something up, or was he doing anything when he bent over or not?
Yes, this time, he had a child in his hands. The first time, he did not, he did, he had no child in his hand, and it was the exact same behavior, the exact same behavior. As I approached him, I, I reckoned not.
Okay, so wait a minute, wait a minute, Mister Lattimore, you're losing me here, now on this particular day, he had a child in his hands?
Yes.
Okay, but you said he did it before, he did not have a child the previous time?
Yes.
Okay.
And it was the exact same motion, exact same behavior, uh, but the second time, this time we're referring to. He had a child in his hands, and I think he was using that.
So on November twelfth, was he bending over to pick up the child or not?
No, the child was already in his arms, and he was putting, putting the child in the car very slowly. Like, very, like, he was being incredibly careful with this kid. But at the same time, he was bending over e- equally slowly and exposing his butt. That I, I, I could see from a distance, um, it was, it wasn't covered up with a shirt. It was an exposed butt with cr- like, a large amount of butt crack on display. And, and uh, he did that, I think he, he hid, he was trying to hide behind his child. Um, he thought maybe I would, nobody was, I don't know, but anyways, I, I approached. I said the words GF yourself, out the window, um, with, what you already reiterated means, go fuck yourself. Eh, 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 it, um, eh, eh, he, he, uh, um. Uh, I'm sorry.
Did he say anything back to you?
No, he did not, he ignored me, um, because he, I, I pre- it wasn't until I said, please pull your pants up, oh no. I'm so sorry, I said, uh, I don't wanna see your ass when I arrive to work. And that's when he turned around, and that's when I, that's when I addressed him, um, uh, because he had. He had pretended like he didn't hear or see me for about two seconds. He turned around and he looked at me, and he recognized who I was, um, he recognized me as a, a person from the UPS store. The guy.
And, and what, what, what made you think that he recognized you?
Because he looked, his eye movement, he looked left, right, around my face, all around my face. And then he locked eyes with me, so I think when you, when you, you, like, you're, you're doing that, you're trying to identify who somebody is. And then when you finally figure out who they are, you, you, you stare, you look at them like you know who they are. And, and so, I recognized him immediately because I, I seen him inside the Jimmy John's. Uh, 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 I've seen him inside the Jimmy John's, um.
Okay, so do you think he worked at Jimmy John's?
He does, he's a general manager.
Okay.
Um, and he wears his pants below his butt, so he sags, I think they call it sagging. But his pants are normally placed below his butt. And my, the owner, Jack Wood McWilliams, said that, that it was an accident. But people who wear their pants below their butts aren't accidentally going to expose their butt to the public. It's gonna happen whenever they bend over.
Yep, so why didn't you just ignore it?
Uh, that is a very good question, I, the first time this happened, I, I did exactly what you just said. I completely ignored it, um, I didn't say anything to him, I didn't, I, I parked in the same place. I uh, it happened in the morning when I was arriving to work, just like it happened the second time. And I did exactly what you just said, I completely ignored it.
Okay, and, and when was this first time in uh, uh, if you can tell me when or give me an estimate of when that occurred?
I, I, I absolutely can, I, 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 I tweeted it, so that's what I did, I'm so sorry. That morning, when that happened, I, I, I tweeted it on, on the internet, on a site, social site called X. And if you truly want that tweet, I will send it to you now or in the future, um, I will find it.
So why don't you just tell me, why, when, when did it occur?
Uh, like, two or three weeks prior.
Okay.
Um, uh, shortly after I started working for the UPS store. Um, I seen this man bent over, and I saw, saw his butt, and I swear on that morning, I parked my car. And I immediately tweeted what I saw, and uh, yeah.
You, you lost me there for a minute, you, you said two or three weeks prior, and then you said right after I started.
Yes, so.
Okay, okay, I get it, I get what you're, what you're saying, okay.
Yes, so I tweeted it.
And so what do you, did you ever ask this guy what his problem was, or, or what?
No, I never, I, I, so, I've seen it so much, what I described to you. Either with exposed butt, or, or someone, a man's exposed butt, or just a man bending over. Uh, so often, that I, I, I can't approach every single person who does this, and I, I refuse to. So when it gets out of control, like, what this man did, is completely out of, out of order. It's uh, it's worse than all the others incidents similar to this. So, I, I, I ignored his first time behavior, because I, I can't address everybody who does this. So I find ways to deal with it, I usually tweet, or, or go on YouTube and tell what happened, or what I saw. The second, yeah.
And so, so this uh second time, this November twelfth event, what time of day is this?
At nine thirty-two in the morning.
And you're scheduled to start work when?
At nine forty-five in the morning.
Okay, thank you for that, so, so, um, you say I don't wanna see your ass when I arrive at work?
Yes.
And then the other guy responded to that?
He said, uh, he asked me, uh, y- do you work at the UPS store? I, I told him yes, um, I, I had no idea what that meant to him, or how that pertained, what that pertained to the. How that pertained to what I just saw, the, anything I just told him. And I guess he had already gone past, like, he already planned, I think this was planned out, the man. Uh, didn't address anything I said to him, anything about the nudity on display, anything about his pants being down, he didn't pull his pants up. Uh, at all, when he stood up, um, his pants, I could see, when he stood up, his, his shirt, his jacket fell bo- over his butt. His pants were still below his butt, and you could see like a space where his butt supposed to be. Um, in his pants, like, just flapping in the air, I don't know. But he, it, when he, when he started to walk away, he pulled his pants up high enough. That I could then see where his butt was supposed to fill his pants in, fill out his pants. So, he skipped over what he did, he can entirely skipped over that his butt was on display, that he had to pull his pants up. Everything that I addressed, uh, said to him, he ignored, and he pulled his pants up. And he, he, the only thing he thought about was where, where do I work? And I, I think the idea was to do something I would respond to. The same way I, I've responded to that, what he did, all over the city of Madison, very close to the place that I work. He was whole, yeah.
So let me ask you a question, Mister Lattimore, when this uh guy then walked away, did he have the child with him?
No, he left the child in the car, and then he, I think he went to go, eh, to see if the, the store was open. So, he went to the door, he opened the do- tried to open the store door, the door was closed. The door, the store doesn't open for another twenty-five minutes, or, at that moment, wouldn't open for twenty-five minutes, or about twenty minutes. Um, he walked back to his.
When you say the store, when you say the store, you're referring to the UPS store, huh?
Yes. Yes, he.
How old do you think this child, how old do you think the child?
Uh, six, eh, six, no older than six. Uh, no younger than five, eh, no, I'm sorry, it was, it was a, a first grader, or a second grader.
Okay. So then what happens after that, he tries the, the door to the store and he can't get in, then what happens?
He walks back to his car, he, he, um, um, his pants are normal. Now, you can clearly see he's wearing his pants correctly, he gets back in his car, he drives to the front of the store, he waits there. I, I look over my right shoulder, and I can see that he is parked in front of the UPS store.
Okay, so does he eventually uh report uh this uh, you, does he eventually report you to somebody at UPS?
Yes, um, I sit in my car for ten minutes, um, I walk to the front of the store. I turn the camera on in my right pocket, um, uh, uh, the guy, the guy. Uh, was, he was going for an argument now, I, I believe, he was, he was thinking. That if he brought this to the attention of the person I worked for, then I would be terminated, um, I, I believe.
So, so, so who did he talk to?
Uh, the, the coworker, my coworker, I'm so sorry, he spoke to my coworker.
Okay, and, and so the person he talked to was a coworker, not a, not a supervisor of yours?
No.
Okay. And, and what does he say to, to the co- to your coworker?
He says, hey, uh, I had a, I had a decent conversation with your coworker here this morning. But he wasn't being serious, he was being funny, he then said, he had a very mean way of speaking to me. And I thought it was very disrespectful, or somewhere along those lines. And she was like, oh, oh, okay, okay, and, and, um, the guy then looked at me and said. Do you think it was appropriate for you to speak to me that way? And I replied, do you think it was a, it was fair for you to expose your butt, um. Eh, in the public, and instead of responding, he sat back in his car, he got back in his car and he sat there. Um, for another twenty minutes, um, it was, yeah, it was about twenty more minutes.
Okay, and then what happened after that twenty minutes?
Uh, he left, came back, stared into the store, like, for two seconds. With a very angry look, and then kept driving. So he drove around the parking lot or around the block, came back, took a, looked right into the store. While I was at, at the cash register, and slowly drove past the store and stared into the store.
Okay.
And that, yeah, that's the last time I, I've seen him.
Okay. Uh. Okay. So was there, there some sort of a standing, uh, problem between, uh? The UPS people and, and the, uh? Uh, Jimmy John's people?
No, I, I don't think so. I, I, I think they were friends. I think they, they, um, no, I don't know. I just got there. I have no idea what was going on between these two. There's probably a whole social world going on between each store. All the employees are probably friends or enemies or have histories together.
So, so did you, did you have some sort of a beef with this guy?
No, I just got, I, I, I avoid all confrontations. Uh, well, not con, not, that's a lie. I try my best to ignore as much, as many bad things as I can. Um, I, I've shopped in the U, Jimmy John's before. Um, when I, the, the one time that I did, uh, the guy coughed into his hands. And, um, and then looked at me. He, he, he raised his hand, he coughed into his right hand. He put his right hand back on the table. And he stared me in the, at me in the face as if I was supposed to say something to him about what he just did. Because he's a, he works with food. So you would think somebody who coughs into their hand would go wash their hands. And maybe that's what he wanted me to say. You should go wash your hands. But I decided not to say anything to him. I ignored it and I just sat there and waited for my food. When I got it, I walked out. Um, but that's the only other, and I mean. That's the only time that I got to, I know this dude. I don't have any beef with him. Uh.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, very well. Uh. So did, uh, UPS have some sort of a, uh, policy that they, uh, contended that you violated?
Yes. Uh, the owner, Jack McWilliams, told me that I violated his policy to not address nudity. Uh, with a customer. He said, this now imitates harassment. Um, I, I argued, oh, and it happened while you were wearing company clothes. Um, yes, that's what he told me.
Let's, let's take a look at U nineteen through U thirty-five, uh, if you would. Does this, uh? No, no, I'm wrong here. U nineteen through U thirty-three.
Okay.
Is this, uh, the policy that was in effect when you worked at UPS?
Yes, the employee handbook?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay.
Um, the policy he told me to follow was to, uh, if you have a problem. With any customers in my store, you're supposed to address a manager. Uh, ask a manager, a manager will deal with any nudity you see in the store. And do not call the police for any reason without contacting, uh, a manager first. Or, or, um, without informing a manager first. Uh, and letting him decide, letting them decide whether the police should be contacted. Uh.
I marked, I marked the policy as exhibit one, that's U nineteen.
Okay.
Through U thirty-three. And, uh. Next, Mr. Lattimore. Let's take a look at, uh. U five and U six. Uh, next, if you would.
U five and U six.
I'm marking U five and U six as exhibit two for today's hearing. This is a summary of a discussion you had with an unemployment department investigator.
Got it.
Named, named Aaron. Do you recall talking to, to an investigator named Aaron?
Yes.
Okay. Now this is Aaron's summary of your discussion. Have you had a chance to look at U five and U six to see if it's an accurate summary?
Yes, it's pretty accurate. There's, there's only two lines I under, there's only two places I underlined. The first one.
Go ahead and, uh, tell me about that. Yeah, go ahead.
The first one was, um, this customer came into the store and started talking to one of my coworkers. That is not accurate. The, um, one, the, uh, the, the individual. That he's referring to was not a customer. It was a person, uh, who was in the parking lot and they never entered the store. So I, I, I don't know how the, the people are characterizing this individual as a customer. He never entered the store. He was not shopping inside the UPS store. Um, as a customer, he was a person. Um, I think they're using the word customer to make it look like, to give the idea that it was somebody who was shopping in the store. But that's not true.
Okay.
And.
And so where did, uh, where did the discussion occur between this, uh, this man and, uh, your coworker?
Um, uh, this discussion took place outside the store before the store was open at around nine forty-three AM. So this was like seventeen, fifteen minutes before the store opened. So, um. Uh, so not once I was in the store after the store opened, that, that's not true. This was fifteen minutes before the store opened and the cut, this individual never entered the store. Um, he started talking to.
So that entire, that entire morning, he never came into the store?
That's correct.
Okay. What else did you wanna correct in, uh, U five and U six?
Um, the, at the bottom of the page, it says, I did yell at a customer in front of other customers at that time. But I didn't use profanity. That is not true. The man never entered the store. He, he was, there was no other customers. I'm so sorry. There was no other customers and there was no.
I think what they're refer, I think what they're referring to is did you ever get a prior warning at the bottom of U five? Did you ever get a warning from anybody for similar behavior?
Oh, yes. Um. Yes, that is true. Uh, but, um, I didn't yell at any customers, ever. Uh, he's, if you're referring to the incident prior, on that day, and I, and I, I promise this is true. Um, that day, a customer entered the store, he bent over, he exposed his butt, it was a very similar incident. Butt was, his butt was rising out of his pants. Um, and, uh, which I believe is, now looks like people are playing games. Uh, but exposing their butts in front of my face. Um, the customer came in, he bent.
When did, when did, when did that, when did that event occur that led to the prior warning?
Uh, ten twenty-seven, twenty twenty-three. So, uh, about two weeks prior.
Okay.
Um.
And, and so, well, what the, who talked to you about, about that event to, did you, did? Somebody in management talk to you about that event?
Yes, Jack, Jack McWilliams, the owner, walked into the store and spoke to me. Because I asked to call the police. Uh, the, the person used his butt to follow me through the store. Uh, so as I walked away, he turned his butt to the left, so I could still see his butt. Um, while he was bent over. Um, and I asked to call the police. And because now it looks like he's, he's purposely displaying his butt for me to see it. And when I asked him, sir, can you please pull your pants up? He stood up, walked out of the store and as he was walking out of the store, he said, if you don't like what you see, look somewhere else. And I thought that was incredibly disrespectful, like the rudest thing a person could possibly say. To an, anybody, especially after you just exposed their butt. You told him to look elsewhere? Uh, I thought about, so my feelings were hurt. I, I wanted to talk to a manager, but she was on the phone. Um, while this was happening, she was talking to somebody on the phone. I, I wa, I waited until she got off the phone. The guy started walking back into the store. I said, hey, sir, can you please wait? Can you please wait? The manager, the manager said, um, I, I, I told the manager what he did. And he turned around, walked up to her and said. Your coworker was very rude to me. He was so mean to me. He was disrespecting me. He was, he, he said bad things to me. And all of the things he said in two seconds or three seconds were complete lies. The only words I asked him, I said, sir, can you please pull your pants up? I never harassed him. I never embarrassed him. I never said anything disrespectful to him. I said what I just told you. Can you please pull your pants up? And, and then I asked him to wait at the front of the store when he came back. Because I wasn't certain if he was allowed to come back because of his behavior. I, I thought that was definitely reasons to not let somebody re-enter the store. And, yeah.
Now, uh. When, uh, Mr. McWilliams, uh, gave you this, uh, previous warnings, did he say if you do this again, I'm gonna fire you?
Yes. Uh, no, he did not, he did not say that. Uh, he said, uh, in the future. Anytime someone displays nudity in my store, tell a manager. And tell a manager and the manager will tell, uh, will deal with it. And please do not call the police without letting us deal with this first and decide how to move forward. Um, we have a image to protect and I don't want the police to arrive. Uh, well, to, to disrupt our image. Um, or you to disrupt our image, um, basically. And then he also told me that anytime, I told, so at that moment, I, I was telling him that this keeps happening to me. People keep exposing their butts to me. And, and he told me, has this been happening outside in the community or have, do you think this is on purpose? And he acted like he cared. And I told him, yes. And he said, so when you're outside and you're driving home and you have these issues, deal with them however you see fit. However you want to. At that time, he never told me if I was wearing his clothes, I have to obey his, still follow his policies. He never said that. He never, he never explained that there's an exception to his rule. That even though I said you can leave and deal with these things however you see fit. You can't be wearing my clothes. He never told me that, which would have, I think he left that out. He withheld information so that he would still have a way to terminate me or he knew that people were gonna continue to show me their butts. Um, and if I happened to be wearing his clothes, he'd have an excuse to terminate me if he, if someone ever told them. That he was wearing your clothes at that time, even if the company logo was covered up.
When you started with the, uh, company, did they make you aware of the handbook?
Uh, yes.
Okay.
And I, I failed to see, Jack claimed the second person was a customer and it violated his, his policies. But, uh, because I addressed it. But the person was in the parking lot. He was never inside the store. Um, he was never distinguished as a customer. Uh, he was never, uh, so I, I, I don't see how Jack could conclude that. The person in the parking lot was this, was a customer. Um, and, and that I was forced to follow his policies, even though I wasn't on company time or company property. Uh, I, I, I considered that point to be part of your personal life. But Jack said, when you're wearing my clothes, it's no longer your personal life. But I've read somewhere on Google that while you're driving to work, you're wearing company clothes. It's still part of your personal life. It's, uh, it's, it's like driving to work is considered to be, in company clothes is considered to be part of your personal life, something like that on Google. Um, and, yeah.
Next, Mr. Lattimore, let's, let's take a look at U seven through U twelve in the papers.
U seven, U seven, alright. You got U six?
These look like some handwritten, these look like some handwritten, uh, statements that you wrote.
Got it. I have it.
It looks like you filled out a form, uh, called a suspension questionnaire.
Yes.
For the, uh, unemployment department. You also did a, a handwritten statement, uh. Well, it looks like maybe I have a couple different, uh, suspension question, question, suspension questionnaires here. And I'm gonna mark all these, uh, did you, uh, in these, uh, uh, statements that you, uh, wrote here?
Yes, I see them.
Were you as accurate as you, uh, could be in, uh, describing, uh, what happened?
Yes. That is exactly what I, um, that's exactly what happened.
Okay.
Oh, yes. Oh, I, I'm just, I'm looking at the back page now. Uh, U eight. Um. Uh, yes, all of this is exactly what, how I feel at that moment and how I still feel today. Um, especially because Jack has continued to lie on, on the DWD documents. Um, he, he's, he's, he's trying to make it look like this happened at work. And it didn't. Um, he, he's, he changed the time from nine thirty in the morning to ten o'clock. He changed the location from in the parking lot to inside the store. And those are inaccurate, but I think he wanted to say that so that he could terminate me. And I couldn't collect unemployment benefits. Um, he, I think he knew that if it happened off of company property, outside of company time. That if he terminated me, I would collect unemployment benefits. Uh, because he couldn't prove, yeah.
So you, you say you weren't on, on company property, you were in, when this guy, uh, uh, bent over. On this, uh, on this last day on, uh, November, uh, twelve, when he was bending over. Um. This was in a parking, in the parking lot?
Yes.
For UPS or not?
Um, it's a shopping mall parking lot. Uh, I called, yeah.
Parking, it was a parking lot for multiple businesses.
Yes, and I called the businesses, uh, two, three days ago and I asked two store owners. How do you guys distinguish the property in the area? Um, uh, in the parking lot? And they said it's an open parking lot. It doesn't belong to anybody. Everyone can come and use the parking lot. The, the businesses don't own or separate the parking lots. Um, uh, so two owners told me that, two separate owners. I called them back to back. Uh, a couple of days ago because I was afraid that, you know, it might be company property. But, uh, it wasn't. So the parking lot belongs to no store. Um, it's the property of the shopping mall, I'm guessing. So everyone's free to use it. And I recorded both of those people who said that.
Okay. Yeah, that's fine.
Okay.
Uh, yeah, I, I don't need, I don't need the recordings. You just told me what they, uh, what they said.
Yeah.
Uh, now, U nine. Looks like an employer's summary.
Yes.
And then you, and you added to or corrected to, uh, what the employer said. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, uh.
And then it looks like another, another copy of that same form at U twelve. Is that the, is that the?
Okay, I have to, I have to find U twelve. I'm so sorry. I have.
Nope, that's okay.
U nine, U ten, U eleven. I do not have U twelve. Uh, well, I prob, I do, it's somewhere. Uh.
It's partially, it's partially obscured. That's why you might not see U twelve.
Oh, I see it. Yes. I tried to send it twice. There we go.
Okay. Yeah, I'm bringing, I'm gonna mark all those and, uh, bring them in, uh, just with the hope that I can. Uh, read as, as much of it as I, uh, can between the, uh, two copies.
Yes.
Uh, cause one of them's kinda partially obscured there.
Yeah. So I think they initially, the first line, John verbally harassed a customer outside of Jimmy John's. While going into work, wearing his work uniform. Is a, uh, is the first lie to turn this into a work-related issue. So, I was not.
You've already mentioned, you've already mentioned, you've already mentioned that. I, I have that in my notes.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, that's okay. Nope, that's okay. Yeah, it's your, it's your contention that this really wasn't work-related, uh?
Yes. And I, I also believe they, they're, they lied to. Perfect, like professionally, like a, a well-scripted way of re, rearranging the, the time and the place, things took place. The events took place. Uh, so they, they're making it look like I was walking into work when this happened. And that's completely false. That, that never happened. And that's completely false. That, that never happened. I was sitting in my car, uh, arriving to work at nine thirty in the morning. Well, not to work, to the parking lot at nine thirty in the morning. I didn't have to be at work for another fifteen minutes. And, uh, they changed the story to, "I was walking into work, walking towards work when I was supposed to be walking into work, and then this happened." Which makes it look like you're supposed to be thinking about work, being at work, becoming an employee, and doing your job. And it looks work-related, or it looks like a work issue at that moment. So, I think they, they, they lied.
Okay. So, uh, I'm gonna mark your papers as, uh, employee one through four, the papers that you sent in, and I'm gonna mark those as exhibit four-
Okay.
For today's hearing. And what's in there that you wanted me to, to see? Looks like one is a summary that you wrote.
Um, the, uh, uh, twelve twenty-five, twenty twenty-three paper? With the date and the-
Yes.
Yes, uh, there's a video. Um, I completely reenacted, uh, everything that transpired. Um, I, I did my best to be as hon, my memory's not as good as it used to be, but I did my best to be as honest as I could be. Um, or give you the best idea of what happened. Um, in my opinion, of the, of, of what, what was playing out. I, um, I think the, the owner and the guy from Jimmy John's worked together to have me terminated because I refused to have, I refused to, eh, I refused to have, like, associate with my coworkers beyond work. Um, I, 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 I don't like socializing with the gay community. I'm so sorry. I, I don't hate, I don't dislike them, but I don't want to have a, like, put them in my personal lives. And I think while I was working at the UPS store, they wanted me to be in the gay community. So, like, start associating your personal life with the people you work with who happen to be in the gay community. Every single last person. And it's like, they were asking me questions about things I like, things I do, um, uh, at home. Uh, like, trying to involve themselves in my personal life, and I did my best the entire time that I was there to avoid them. Uh, any personal in court, like, interactions. And, um, uh, I think when it was clear that nothing was appearing to be coming out of me working at the UPS store, that Jack found a way to make sure he could pull me out of his store at any moment. So, he used behaviors that I have outside his property, outside of his company, uh, to, um, to, to terminate me. So, he knows that when people bend over in public, I say the words, um, uh, I say the words GF yourself to them. And I think he decided if he brought that close enough to work or inside his store, he could terminate me at any moment. So, it was a way out. But it didn't work. So, yeah.
Okay. And now this gentleman, this was the second time that he had bent over such that you could see him, this guy from Jimmy John's?
Yes.
And the other time was a few months earlier?
Yes, a, a few weeks, few weeks earlier.
A few weeks earlier?
Yes.
Okay. He didn't do it every time you saw him?
No. And it, yeah, I, I wanna say it wasn't an accident. If you walked up to him, you could clearly see his pants are, are sagging. There's like a space where his butt's supposed to be, where his, his pants are below his waist. And, and, uh, I think he carries himself like that way all the time. And I, uh, it's a grown man. It's like a forty or fifty-year-old man walking around with his pants sagging. And I don't think he's doing it on accident.
You don't thi, so you think that's his style?
Yes.
Okay. Now, the last page I'm looking at is a December four note. Looks like it was written by you. Uh, and it looks like a request for UPS to provide video. What, uh, did you want me to see in this one?
Alright, so the UPS store claimed I was not at work. Uh, I mean, I was on company time, uh, when this occurred. And I clocked in to work at about nine forty-three AM. I walked into the store, or I was standing in front of the store at nine forty-four AM. And I, I know they have footage. Well, they have cameras, so they have recordings of when you, uh, when somebody enters their store. And if they have a record of when I clocked in, you can pretty much tell where, when and where I was. And if, um, I have the recording of when, the audio recording of when I walked into the store on that day and this incident didn't happen, well, there's no yelling, I mean, there's no swear words or anything like. I was trying to prove that he lied about when and where events took place. And I think he refuses to give the audio, I mean, the video or answer any of my questions because he, he doesn't want to help me prove that he's lying or that he lied to you guys about when and where things took place. And, uh-
So, the, the employer, the employer didn't give you the video that you requested?
Yes. He did not. He didn't respond at all.
I'm just looking through my file to see if I have any other questions, uh, for you, Mr. Lattimore. Just give me a minute if you would.
Alright.
Yeah, I don't have any other questions for you, Mr. Lattimore. Anything else you wanted to tell me about your suspension, uh, by, um, by UPS that we haven't already covered?
No. Um, the suspension was, uh, uh, I think it was in a, uh, no, I just, I, I think, I, I followed all of his rules. Every single thing Jack told me to do, I did. Every policy he asked me to follow, I followed. Um, if he had, if he asked me to do something, I would have done it. Um, so telling me to, that wearing his company clothes means I had to follow his policies, whether I believed him or not, I would have done it. Um, um, telling me that to follow his policies outside of his store, I would have done that as well. But he didn't do that. He didn't tell me to follow-
Yeah, okay, okay. Anything else regarding your discharge that we haven't already covered?
No, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, uh, no, 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 no mentions, nothing. He, uh-
Okay. But he has a lot of what you're saying I already-
You're pretty much-
Everything you're already saying I already have in my notes, so-
Yes.
I think I have your position there. Okay, very well. With that, I'll, uh, close today's testimony. And, uh, I remind you that I marked some exhibits during today's hearing. I marked four exhibits during today's hearing. Do you have any objection to my taking those marked exhibits?
No.
Call terminated due to a temporary error.
Hello?
The unemployment judge calling you back.
Hi.
My system, uh, cut us both off at once there, so you didn't, uh, you didn't miss anything. Um, it just, uh, terminated, uh, uh, you from the call and also terminated me from the call, so I apologize for that.
Just quit.
Uh, I think my question for you is, did you have, do you have any objection to my taking the marked exhibits into evidence?
No, I do not.
Okay. Thank you. The marked exhibits are admitted into evidence. And with that, I'll close today's record. Here's what'll happen next. Mr. Lattimore, I'll write two decisions. One for the, uh, suspension, uh, uh, appeal and the, the other one for the, uh, uh, discharge appeal. And it'll take me about a week to write those decisions and get them in the mail. When you receive those decisions, please read them. If you like a decision, you don't have to do anything with it.
Okay.
If you don't like a decision, you can appeal it to a level higher than me. There will be instructions enclosed with my, uh, two decisions telling you how to appeal. Those instructions are always enclosed with the, uh, decisions.
Okay.
Uh, with that, the hearing is over. Do you have any general questions before we sign off?
Yeah. What does a DWD consider as company time?
I don't know. I'm gonna have to review that.
Alright.
But, uh, that's, that's what I decide is, is, uh, because the, the, if there is misconduct or substantial fault involved, I have to decide whether it's, uh, uh, connected with the work or not. And, uh, so I'll have to, to, uh, see what has happened in previous cases. I'll have to do a little research there. Okay?
Alright.
Any other, uh, questions, Mr. Lattimore?
Nope, you just explained everything. So, I really appreciate it.
Okay. Okay, very well. Uh, Mr. Lattimore, thanks for your participation this morning. I hope you have a nice rest of your day.
Thank you. You too.
You're welcome.
Bye.
Thank you. Bye-bye.